The town of Groton planning zoning meeting is called the order. Like to do a roll call. Hal?
Here.
Mike and Bill?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Let's see. And we got our forum tonight. Thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing. Starting with that. That was continued from the July eighth, twenty twenty five meeting. So I guess at this time, is the applicant here? Okay. The applicant wants to come forward and present.
This is Crystal Lake?
Yes, Crystal Lake Apartments.
Can I just announce something? So um, I did a due diligence and as requested by town planning staff, and I reviewed all the documents and watched the video from the last referendum that was continued, so.
Thank you very much.
If. Rice.
It's not that bad, look. Not gonna make you host, Joe, but might just have to. Want to make him his co-host? There we go.
Beautiful.
Sorry about that. Just don't close the Zoom when you're done.
You can state your name and address, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you both. Um. My name is Joe Duhamel from Dupree Engineering with office at two Safford Court, Cranston, Rhode Island. On behalf of the applicant. Zero zero Crystal Lake LLC, we are here to continue the presentation from the last July meeting. From that meeting, we had four action items. Um, I should add that attorney Bill Sweeney was unable to attend on the project team's behalf. He had another matter to attend for tonight. Um. From from that last meeting, we presented the Crystal Lake Apartments. Proposed ninety-two apartments with ninety-nine parking spaces. Stormwater improvements, infrastructure improvements. Landscaping and um. A sort of all sorts of improvements to the product, project. From the last meeting, there were four action items to discuss. Um, they were the revision or update to a traffic report based on the commission's response. Um, in addition of a sidewalk connection to the eastern parking lot. In addition of a loading zone in front of the storage building that's on the east side of the site. Um. The addition of or clarification electrical vehicle parking from make ready versus what we reconstructed. And then there were some discussions on the wall type for the front of the building, front of the site. See. What I would like to do is go through the site plan changes. Highlight those and then I'll just hand it over to John Shalton from PAR for discussion of the traffic updates. And then Chad Frost from Kent Frost of um. For the landscaping improvements project. Um. As as indicated, a couple items in the site plans that that was requested was also on the east side in front of the storage building. Um. If I can zoom in as well. It was the addition of a loading zone. Uh, for unloading or reloading vehicles from the storage building. And the discussion for that was we it's. What's shown on the plan is we also added signage. Uh, for that. Uh, temporary or unloading loading loading zone, its access through the existing ramp to the storage building and access to the uh, building. On various north and western side of the structure. Um, in addition. The commission asked for a sidewalk connection from the eastern parking lot. Mainly in front of the electrical vehicle. Um. Parking area to connect into building one. So what we have added is this concrete sidewalk where my cursor is. Uh, they'll connect to the uh, crosswalk over the proposed driveway to building one. Um. The last update to the site plan is the clarification of electrical vehicle parking. Um, these, the hatched. Or red hatched uh, blocks that you see on the eastern side. About ten spaces in the eastern and there's two. Uh, EV ADA compliant ready um. Charging charging stations. Those would be constructed at the time of building occupancy. The rest, as indicated, the opened unhatched. Again, my cursor is, excuse me. On the right-hand side, these five spaces and then there's additional. Uh, additional spaces on the western side for level two or future possible connection. With with that, I'll transfer to John Shavlin. And as part of the part of the comments from the commission, one of the things that we did and John looked at as part of his update was that we contacted the naval base and received peak hours. For the uh, for the for the. Peak hours for the vehicles during the day and got traffic counts. For the gates. So as part of that, John has included that into his report. Much of us.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is John Shavlin from Park Corporation, located at eight Blackstone Valley Place in Lincoln, Rhode Island. Um, so as Joe mentioned, as we recall, the last meeting, one of the things that was talked about was in regards to our distribution of traffic. Uh, when we did our study, we took a look in regards to the thought that a lot of the truck would be heading, a lot of the truck would be heading towards Route twelve. Um, that basically came from a report that was done for a previous project of this location back in twenty nineteen. That's the distribution that they had. But after further discussions and talking, we feel like there could be a lot of Navy people here, so we changed that distribution. And we went and we had the traffic for the majority of it going towards the naval base. So we did change that as far as how cars would be coming out of this site. We also were very conservative in regards to the number of trips. As Joe mentioned, the Navy gave us some information. So the peak hours really is from five thirty to to eight o'clock in the morning as far as entrance distributed. Um, so we went and we assumed that over the course of uh, the peak hour that at least half the traffic would be coming out of the site. So you have forty-six trips that we have coming out of the site compared to what we have for eight um. Based on I T E, the trip generation manual where we had exiting twenty-six. So we we almost doubled the traffic that's coming out of the site to go ahead and do our analysis. We also went out and did a traffic gap analysis where we had individuals go on the field and take measurements as far as traffic that's going by the site and what the time differences are in regards to be able to safely pull out of the site. Uh, they went ahead, they took a look at five seconds, ten seconds, just the delays over the course of uh, over, I think, almost two hours. They started at six fifteen and they ended at like eight fifteen. Now, we found that with the trip distributions, a lot of gaps in there. We took it in regards to the times where the gaps are uh, ten seconds or more to be a safe distribution out of there. We also observed that the traffic heading eastbound. Um, it was very light, so there maybe cars could go out there to the to the inner lane and pull onto the left side, but we also observed that a lot of times when the traffic light up on Route twelve in Crystal Lake, uh, there's tremendous gaps in there when the when the lights going ahead until red. There's no right turn on red. It's a combination. Uh, when you're heading, I guess it'd be northbound, southbound. Um, it'd be gone ahead. It's a combination through and right. So there is no right turn on red there. So you do have that gap when traffic for eastbound, westbound is moving. So that creates tremendous gaps in there. So we found over the course of the time that we did these studies, there's plenty of gaps in there. Uh, based on their observations, they took a very conservative gap analysis in regards to any traffic that was heading westbound. Um, that that was going and they're counting that. So whether it's the inside lane or the outside lane, that's what they took for the gap. But they observed that a lot of times the gaps could have been a lot more sufficient, even because the left left, the left side lane uh, heading westbound was was open, but they took account of the other lane being in there. So they found that the gaps were sufficient in regards to pulling out of the site. Uh, we did a capacity analysis also for the new trip distribution. And it shows that the level of service coming out of the site would be level service B, and that takes into account the volumes on Crystal Lake Road, both eastbound and westbound, the traffic that would be coming out of the site. So you know, based on our observation, the gap analysis uh, and what we observed out there, we feel very comfortable in regards to cars being able to safely go in and out of that site during the during the peak hours. I mean, if one of them happened to answer, answer any questions.
Is that C in your presentation?
What's that?
Is that C in your presentation?
It is. I mean, unless you need me to go, I I present the whole traffic study at the last meeting. So they were just asked us to go ahead and take a look in regards to look at the distribution of traffic and then uh, looking at the gap analysis and seeing if they can go ahead and come in and out of the site safely.
Do you want to say?
Oh, is this the other, the whole presentation of mine? Oh, this is, no, this.
I don't know what holds on for the night.
Yeah, no, I'm done.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, Joe's bringing up the plan. I will, you think you have this in your packet. But it is uh. The cut sheets for the wall materials. Uh, that we were proposing out there and I did bring in a sample as well. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Show and tell.
So the question was, uh, wall materials. Uh, this is what we're recommending. Um. If it's a, in our opinion, a refined uh segmented, you know, lock type product. It's a a nice finish on it, good color samples. Uh, we are recommending a blend somewhere between the almond growth and the sandstone. That's the sandstone color. We think that the either the blend of that or going all the way towards a sandstone, that warm French gray look uh, will match nice with the architecture of the building, uh, and it won't just look like a concrete block wall that's up there. You can see in the photos, we did go to Great Lakes to look for the right, in our opinion, the right block. Uh, this is a large block, so it's about seven inches tall. That's just a cat piece. The block itself is about seven inches tall. Uh, and about forty inches long, right? So that from a scale perspective, as you're going down Crystal Lake, uh, it's not a hundred tiny little pieces of a wall, right? It's big pieces. Each wall is less than forty high anyways. Um, and then we added a bunch of landscaping. We already had the shrubs in between the levels, but then we added some more down the road side as well. And I'll just note that we modified some of the landscaping right around the entrance to ensure that we have good vision triangles as we're leaving as well. Um. That's effectively it. So uh, thought it was a nice product, nicer than just a typical, you know, kind of cylinder block product, cinder block that you see in a lot of places with flats up at the front aesthetic and be a nice thing for people to be driving by. Any questions for me on the block? Wall, landscape. Want to wrap it up?
Well, with that, that concludes the updates that was requested at the last meeting. Um, entertaining comments or questions at this time?
I think we'll. Open the staff first.
All right.
Thank you, Dave.
I can reiterate some of my same comments from last time. Again, this property zone CN, it's located in the N M D D and the CAM uh, for a special permit and the CAM and posted site plan. Uh, all required notices and referrals have been made. Um. While multi-unit dwellings are allowed in the CN zone, the Nautilus Memorial Design District requires public hearing uh, for multi-unit dwellings, subject to those performance standards. Uh, we went through that um, a little bit during the last meeting. Um, all performance standards, as you might have been able to tell from the um staff summary, um, have been met for that Nautilus Memorial Design District. Um, again, the Navy has reviewed and commented on this application pretty extensively throughout uh, its lifecycle and they have no further comments uh, that need to be resolved. Uh, the CAM application asserts that impacts to nearby coastal resources will be limited through the use of those mitigation measures that we've gone over um, in the the past meeting. Uh, E N S measures will prevent sedimentation to nearby coastal resources and all stormwater on site will be treated and limit total water volume discharges to Crystal Lake system that has been routed through that Navy base uh, prior to being discharged into the Thames. Um, again, I want to reiterate that there will be, there's expected to be pretty significant earthwork for the site to get it ready um, for those pads and creating the buildings. Um. Staff has worked with the applicant extensively to provide as much information as possible around the cutting and filling required on the site as well as those engineered slopes that we went over during that last meeting. Um, an environmental bond will be required and conditions of approval around that site work will be included.
Well, I guess at this point, you have any?
Your audience, see if there's anybody in the public who wants to talk. Series is so open.
It is. Yeah, it's still open. Well, I was gonna do the questions after we met.
Okay. All right.
Um. I don't, I'm actually pretty satisfied with it. The two things he answered for me was the uh. Was the uh landscaping. And I think I'll make the mention here that it's that the gap analysis was pretty interesting. Um, I think the total capacity of everything was never in question. Um, but I kind of liked. How in how detailed this is, is terrific. And I just want to make sure everybody realizes that. Thanks to having this, we should hold on to this for that road. Is that if we ever want to put another dense um, housing, we might have to really look at this again because uh. What this is telling us is that if you do the math. Um. Three seconds is the safe distance. So three seconds, you're pulling into a space, you need three seconds in front, three seconds in back, and the car will add another second, that's seven. So for every ten second gap, that's good for one car. For a fifteen second gap, unless these are jet pilots who are accustomed to doing organized things, it's two cars. So it's a very slow progression and filling up the gaps. So the next building down, the next thing will fill up enormous number of these gaps over quite a bit of time. Um, but this clearly to me does show that cars can pull out without needing to be in the wrong lane, which I didn't think was ever a great idea. Um, it might take a little time, as you say, it's just condition B. So it could stack up if twenty guys decide to take off at the exact same moment and they're not getting out at the same moment, but they'll get out within ten minutes or so, maybe fifteen. So I'm good.
Right.
Um. So I'm trying to find it here, but I just uh. That sidewalk seems great. Um. What's the elevation change between the uh, that east sidewalk where it's like, I mean, I'm just want to make sure it's all like because I I thought that we had talked about stairs, so this is better.
No, it's um.
This is about two feet, is that what I'm?
About six percent, I think the slope is. It's 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 uh. So that parking space is elevation forty-two, the crosswalk is at elevation forty and a half.
Oh, okay. And I kind of, that's what I kind of. So and it's like, looks like it's pretty long.
Yeah.
Is that, so the entrance to the sidewalk is at the end of the uh.
Parking space.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, that's that's great. To me. And the and the, uh, thank you for that loading zone. It seems to me like it, hopefully it makes sense to everybody, but it seemed like the EV chargers. And I'm just wondering, maybe it's us too, in the way that we do them, but you show them on the print, they're in the middle of the space. And very often, when you see them out in the public, like the one that we have here, they one, one um, one does two spaces. I just wonder why we do it that way, or if.
It's just up to the applicant what they want to do. Some some have the dual heads, some have the single heads.
Yeah, I think I think for this purpose, more graphical representation of the parking place. Have this, if there's.
The only ones that I was wondering about would seem like the ones that are the ADA on the uh westernmost building there, there's two spaces there for ADA only. Because if someone is needs that spot, then they can't charge their car there. But if that were shifted to the line instead of in the middle of the space. Either one could use it, I would imagine. It wouldn't preclude a person who was ADA from doing it. Or if you got a dual head, I don't know if there's an additional expense, but you're getting four, you know, double the bang for the buck.
Right, right.
And it would seem, I don't know what, but when I look at the other ones and then too, you have all those units. It might be beneficial to have ones that did two heads instead of one and then just put in five instead of ten. I don't know, just. If that's good with you guys, you know. Anyway, that's, that was my, that would be a comment.
Just just to confirm though, it wouldn't, the the space would still be restricted to EV charging, that's what you mean, but you just, you're just out, okay, okay.
Machine has two.
Yeah.
Wires.
Yeah, just.
Out of it, it does two spaces, so you're only pulling one wire to it.
Yep.
And then you've got, you know, and you know, imagine that you're gonna pay a little bit more for this, but now you're not buying two.
I think the only consideration, and I don't know the answer, uh, for the dual head at ADA spots is accessibility and not creating any kind of hazards. I don't know what the best practice is specifically for those.
I'll leave it up to whoever. Maybe it could be a technical item, if people even care.
Yeah.
You know, I do, but uh. Might end there. Uh. The the wall, I'm fine with French gray. It sounds great. And that's it. Thank you.
Just one word on the EV since I just took my uh electric car to Maine, you know, six and a half hours driving, so I had to charge a battery up. Um. You really found that it's all over the map, the way they put the charging stations and some of them are convenient and some of them aren't. And most everybody backs in, of course. Otherwise, you may all look, but um. Some people figured it out a lot better than others for sure. Um, even with a long hose, you can pull over if you have to, but it's something to think about if you want to make it for like handicap accessibility. They have something that would definitely reach longer than the usual ones. Okay. Yeah.
Um, I'm also good with your selection of the uh, stonework. It looks, it's gonna look nice. Um, I did have a question, just you um. Traffic, you said there's no turn on red at that corner?
Does the? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, when you approach that, it's a combined through lane and right turn lane. So if you have a through car going there, there's no, you can't take, you could take a right turn. If you're the first one there, yeah, or there is cars that go through.
Yeah, I was just looking at it on the map and.
Yeah. Sorry about that.
And that's uh, okay. That's a, I don't think that changes anything.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got. Um, so when I just read, the only algorithms I think that were open for me was of course the traffic. I think you guys filled that gap. In fact, it's almost doubled and we're still good, which is very interesting. But if you take a right, it's got to affect. Um. Because that obviously shortens the time, waiting time at the light, right? The algorithm changed. So shouldn't that change um, the throughput of your particular, that particular lane on Crystal Lake?
Taking the right, Crystal Lake onto there?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the the just the timings, I'm just saying the timings there, at times there's no traffic coming to the right. Uh, when the eastbound, westbound moments have the green, because nobody's moving nor south. So if there is a car that is going through, there is gaps are provided there, which we got the signal plan, looks like the green time is a minimum like twenty seconds, so it does provide even right there at twenty seconds before you come in.
Okay.
So.
That's great. And so when we looked at, so thank you, that was the only traffic issue I had. But then we looked at the sidewalk, we just talked about the grading. So is that a two percent grading from the parking lot where the cars are parked? Two foot.
Two foot, two foot, two feet.
It wasn't the distance. Wasn't percentage.
Correct.
Right. What what is that percentage, sorry?
Uh, roughly six percent.
So it was the six percent. Okay, thank you. That was the only clarification I needed.
Okay.
So.
Yes, I also, like Kevin knows, watched the meeting. The recording and everything, it was, I was having a problem with the traffic study, but I think this updated one really solved a lot of the answers and went went out to the site and looked at it um, after I was home and things started to make more sense too, so. And I think in fact, it sounds like it will work. So that's all I had. I guess um, at this time, is there anyone from the public, um, having heard all of us that would like to make some comments? Either for against the applications? Okay, anybody online? Okay, I guess hearing done, I guess I'll entertain a motion to pause the hearing if everybody's ready to go.
So moved, second.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? If all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Okay, it's unanimous, carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next, um. Just Hal, if you wouldn't mind reading the um.
Legal ad?
Legal ad, thank you. The legal.
I've put you on, you have it?
Oh, that's right.
You can have notes back afterwards.
I don't remember anymore.
Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M in the community room two Town Hall Annex one thirty-four Groton Long Point Road and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Re-sew division of land of Rinald, a Grineer deceased and Samuel Siski deceased, Siski deceased. Sharon Topkin, successor executor, creating one residential building lot on a seventeen thousand five hundred and fourteen square foot parcel of land at five hundred, five ninety-one New London Road in the RS twelve zoning district. The parcel is identified as PIN two six zero eight zero seven six nine 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 zero three on a plan entitled map depicting proposed re-subdivision of portion of a portion of Bel Air Estates, section B one. A Zoom meeting link will be posted to the town's website, meeting calendar, applications are on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours at the planning department, one three four Groton Long Point Road. Groton, Connecticut, dated this first day of August, twenty twenty-five at Groton, Connecticut.
Thank you very much. At this time of the applicant, it's important.
Yeah, we're done with it. Uh, good evening. My name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, a professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut with an office at seventy Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Uh, here representing uh, the owners um. And the applicant uh, for a one lot subdivision. Um, on New London Road.
Um, on New, Zero New London Road, uh, the. Proposed lot, it's a. Non-building lot that was kinda left over from the Bel Air, the original Bel Air sub, uh, subdivision back in. Nineteen fifty-nine, uh, so I'm gonna take you through. The, uh, how it came about. Uh, from the original subdivision, so there is an exhibit on sheet one, uh, that's before you. Uh, exhibit A, uh, was the original subdivision. Uh, and actually I have the original subdivision map here also, if that's helpful. But I tried to get it all onto one sheet to kinda take you through the timeline. Uh, so subdivision, uh, exhibit A, which is, uh, located in the. Upper left-hand corner of sheet one, uh, shows the original subdivision, and then we shaded in, uh, the subject property. So it was originally, this portion was originally subdivided into lots thirty-six. Through forty-one, they went from Sharon Road through to New London Road. And shortly thereafter, uh, exhibit B, uh, they revised it within months. To, uh, only forty-one and forty went through to New London Road. Uh, lots thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine, uh, were. Basically cut in half, as you can see in the exhibit. About that time, lot thirty-seven. Uh, which again, original lot thirty-seven went, uh, from Sharon Road through to New London Road. Uh, the revised approved plan went only about halfway. So there was a sliver of land, uh. That was not supposed to be part of, uh, lot thirty-seven. Somewhere right around there, uh, shortly thereafter that, uh, both of these subdivisions, lot thirty-seven was sold. Uh, but it was sold with the additional piece going all the way through to New London Road. Uh, so really lot thirty-seven was sold, and then they tacked on some additional land. Cause it wasn't part of the original lot. Um, so that left the subject lot landlocked. We thought it was a, a building lot, we actually got to. Uh, almost right to the finish line with the, with the, with the application, the original application. But, but forth through DOT and so forth. And thought we were gonna get, uh, the ability to, to file a for building permit, um, it was about a year ago, I guess. Uh, and then, uh, Mr. Zanarini asked, hey, is this a, is this a building lot? And we were a little taken aback, however, we went with staff, we went through the, uh. Uh, through all the, uh, the history of it. And we concluded that it was not an official building lot or part of an official subdivision. It was extra land, it was intended, I think originally, to be. Part of more additional land, but the fact that lot thirty-seven was sold. We're not sure if it was on purpose, by accident, uh. But it landlocked this piece, so here we are with a modification to the Bel Air, uh, original Bel Air subdivision. Uh, to, uh, I guess to one lot re-subdivision. So that kinda takes you through the history, um. Of how the lot was developed, uh, the first sheet is, is basically the record subdivision map, which shows. Uh, that it's in compliance, size-wise and so forth, uh, meet all the setbacks and. Uh, the second sheet of the set. Shows the house we're proposing, uh, shows the location of the driveway. The driveway is, um, kind of at the peak of New London Road as well as at, uh. A bend in the road, so you can actually see, uh, you're kind of up higher and you can see in both directions. We did do a sightline map, which we did submit to DOT. Um, they did review it and they had some initial comments, we resolved those, this is back a year ago. So the most current letter from DOT. Uh, is asking for town approval, which is, we did not get at the time because it was not deemed a building lot. Um, and then some paving details which we need to supply, as well as they wanted us to move. Uh, the underground electric to, to the back of the utility pole, instead of on the side, that way if someone hits the utility pole, they don't. Hit the electrical service coming down. Which are all, uh, uh, minor technical issues with DOT, so we. Are, uh, content with where we are with them at this point. Until we get, uh, approval of the, of the lot. So again, uh, what's before you is a modest house with a two-car garage, uh. We did underground, uh, infiltration storage, all the utilities are underground, existing sewer. Uh, lateral is already into the lot, um. Uh, proposed water service will come off of, uh, the existing water main. Um, and, uh, relatively, uh, minor, uh, minor grading on the lot. Uh, there is an existing stone wall, uh, located that comes across, uh, the property line. Um, side property line, we're not proposing to, to do anything with that, uh, there's also a stone wall along the frontage. Uh, the only portion we're gonna, uh, affect is where the driveway comes in. Uh, there's concern from one of the neighbors that some of the stones, uh, the, the wall sits up on a bank. And I think over the years, it's in disrepair, um. Maybe there's some history of some stones rolling. Down the bank towards the road, which is what was indicated in the email I received. The, uh, my client is willing to rebuild, uh, and maintain the wall, uh, thereby hopefully, uh. Eliminating that concern with, with stones coming down. So we are asking for a couple of waivers, one is the sidewalks, uh. We did offer a, any, uh, an eight-foot easement on the backside of the wall, so it would be on the developed. Side of the property, on our own property for a future sidewalk. Or there are no, uh, sidewalks on New London Road. And quote me if I'm wrong, Deb, I think you wrote it in your report, was all the way to Groton Long Point Road and then maybe Judson. Uh, so there's a pretty good stretch that there's just no sidewalks, um. It might make sense, just given the grading, uh, ultimately for sidewalk to be on the other side of the street, however, we're. Offering an eight-foot easement, um, if they do get extended at some point. Which would hopefully avoid some street, existing street trees that are to remain, um, as well as get it behind the stone wall. Uh, the other waiver we're asking for is to get all the public improvements done prior to. Uh, issuance of a building permit, um. There are just, uh, let me see, paved apron in the right of way, uh, monumentation. And. There's one other, uh. One other public improvement, uh. But rela-, or maybe it's, um. Uh, the water service and the sewer service, let me just. Street trees, okay, uh. So given construction, small lot, we prefer to have, uh, those items kinda completed before certificate of occupancy. Uh, historically, we put in monuments. Before construction and they get damaged during construction, so we end up redoing them. Uh, the entrance is gonna be used as a construction entrance also. Uh, again, prefer that we pave at the end or closer to the end prior to certificate of occupancy. Uh, so we don't damage. Uh, the paved apron, uh, three out of four of the street trees are existing. So, uh, we'll protect those during construction, uh, but the one. One street tree we're proposing, I believe is, uh, near the entrance and, uh, prefer not to put that in again till certificate of. Occupancy request. Uh, so those are the two waivers we're asking for respectfully. Yeah, I mentioned utilities are all underground, uh, there's already a sewer lateral to the slot, which. Kinda would lead you to believe that it was always to be a lot, um. That's it. Uh, we addressed all the, back in, on July twenty-first, we addressed all of staff's concerns, uh, regarding, uh, planned modifications. Uh, if there's any questions regarding any of those, I'm happy to go over them. Let's see if there's anything specific here. Public Works had some relatively minor comments, just gonna put up the, um. Two waivers, we submitted an appraisal. Uh, for a fee in lieu of, for open space, the appraisal come in, was accepted by staff and reviewed by the assessor. As a, uh, fair market value for the property on, as a non-building lot, um, prior to subdivision. Um, it was thirty thousand dollars, so the fee in lieu of would be three thousand. Um, all our mailings are in order. Let me just flip to the sightline. Now, there's, they have the full-size original maps for the original subdivision. We can come back to those if there's any specific questions on that. Otherwise, I'm gonna go to the, uh, sightline drawing. It's a survey. Uh, so this is the sightline drawing that was submitted to DOT, um, our lot. Uh, to the bottom of the plan, uh, to the south. Um, so you can see the road kinda has a bit of a bend in this, uh, or curve. Uh, we are at the, um. Kind of the edge of the curve, so you can kinda see in both directions, uh. We're set up fifteen feet behind the edge of pavement, looking, uh, to oncoming traffic in both directions. Uh, we did get the sightline requirement of four hundred and eighty feet directly from DOT. Um, and then you can see, uh, in the profile view, there's some. Uh, minor grading right on our lot, uh, that will allow you to see. Uh, basically all the way to the intersection of Fishtown, um, and then the four hundred and eighty feet to the, uh, to the east. And again, that's been seen by DOT, they had no more comments regarding it, that's why it's not on the most recent letter from them. I think that's it, unless there's any questions or concerns. Uh, regarding any of the material we presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm just gonna do a quick summary here, um, so, so, yes, the mailings are in order. Um, as, as required by the subdivision regulations, this is a one lot subdivision. Um, in the RS twelve zone, which requires a minimum of twelve thousand square feet, over seventeen thousand square feet are provided on this lot. Um, this is a re-subdivision of Bel Air, section B one, right? Um, there were a lot of Bel Airs back in the day, um, B one was essentially Sharon Road, Rhonda Road, and the West section of Farmstead. Um, excuse me, it originally approved, this section originally approved in nineteen fifty-nine. Um, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna call out lot numbers, I'm gonna call out addresses for folks who are here who may be more familiar with what their address is, right? Um, so the property is at seventy-four, eighty-six, one hundred and one oh eight Sharon, originally had frontage both on Sharon and New London Road. Nineteen sixty, those lots were reduced in size, eliminating the New London Road frontage, which essentially left this. Parcel as sort of a no man's land, there was no, was not called out as a lot, it was just leftover land. Um, so, so it is not an approved building lot, and that's, that's the subject of this application. So as, as noted, there are two waivers requested, the sidewalk waiver, um, because of the distance to addition to. Linking sidewalks along Route one, uh, Public Works is comfortable with the, excuse me, with the, um, easement. It's, it's eight feet and they're comfortable, at some point in the future, they could install a sidewalk if we get other easements along Route one. Um, completion of the public improvements is something that's required by the subdivision regulations, the regulations require. That all public improvements be completed, um, on the last, at, until. When we hold the last ten percent of building permits, until those are completed. So in order for them to get a building permit without installing the pins and doing all the other stuff, they do need a waiver of that. Um, any waiver, um, that is approved has to be approved by three-quarter vote of the commissioner for commissioners in favor. Um, open space, um, is not proposed here in fee, it would be a very small, isolated piece, instead, they are proposing to do a fee in lieu of. Um, that open space dedication, we do have one item of public comment from. The owner of one oh eight Sharon Road, that was forwarded to you all this afternoon and attached to the agenda packet, and I'll just read it in case folks did not see it. Um, the builder's construction plan states that the proposed grading shall minimize disturbance of the existing stone wall on Route one. It may be beneficial to remove sections of that wall to prevent loose rocks from occasionally falling and potentially landing on Route one itself. Additionally, the line of sight for a driver exiting the driveway should be maintained to allow the driver to see the Route one traffic approaching from both directions. Stonewall removal should not necessarily be minimized. The above is a suggestion, not affecting me personally, previous zoning questions I had were resolved by Mr. Zanarini. Um, that's all that I have, although just one housekeeping thing, um, Lauren Gothier did attend. Um, virtually at seven oh three, had a bad connection and left at seven eleven, so she is not, she's just not participating.
Um, okay, thank you very much. Yes, Hal, have any questions or comments?
I don't think I have any questions, just make, make sure I understand about the stone wall. Is that, uh, seemed valid comment to. Where he said, we're gonna firm up, part of the project will become to firm up the stone wall and make sure it's in better shape, but also, I appreciate the idea of. Maintaining as much as you can. Is there, is, is the stone wall completely taken into consideration with these cycles? Is that in a car?
Yes.
So, don't worry, it's not a problem with it. I don't think I have a problem with, with anything else, like, looks to be like the opportunity for sidewalk is across the street, actually. Because of the grading on either side, but, so, but just in case, it's been satisfying. No further question.
Michael, uh, I don't have any problem with the waiver for the completion of the public improvements, that's fine, um. That, if I don't remember, if I can remember, that wall is elevated from the road. Yeah, I know the wall, uh, but you're gonna fix it, build it back, I would like to see that wall maintained.
Yes, yes, we didn't get it onto the plan in time.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
We responded on the record.
Um, is the sidewalks that were asked to waive, are the, is, are they part of the sidewalk plan?
Right, and I think I had that in your packet, it is a recommended sidewalk along this road. Um, but as I also noted in my staff report, the closest connection is here at the top of the hill, at Groton Long Point Road over, or over at Judson. So it will be just a very, very small section of sidewalk, not connecting to anything. Um, yeah, so, so. So, so that's why we're proposing. Just with the easement.
I guess I'm okay with that. I'm think I was like, in my head, I'm thinking the only place that people would probably really other than just going for exercise, if they were in that Bel Air, they're gonna walk to that convenience store. But it's probably safer and easier to walk through the development rather than out on Route One. It's, it needs a sidewalk there.
All of Route One needs a sidewalk. Completely agree.
Yep, very dangerous, so. I guess until we're ready to pay for it, I would say that that I'm okay with that waiver, so long as there's that, two waivers. Right, made it on both of them. Otherwise, seems like a pretty straightforward. Thank you for the money for open space.
Thanks.
I guess, just for clarification, the two properties, I guess, to the west, are they also in this no man's land?
Yes, they are.
Sorry, there will be public comment.
Yeah. Well, get it from there.
Yeah, so those two are wedges here. Yeah. No, but yes, these are part of a separate parcel that extends out to Fish Town. So that's thirty-seven dozen, thirty-seven was sold across. So this is actually one person now, you can see it in Exhibit C. Thirty-seven as that's sixty-eight, is that right? They own from Sharon all the way. Alright, but the parcel, you're correct, I'm saying this parcel is leftover on the corner of Fishtown.
Alright, alright. I would say when you mentioned a modest house, that's a modest house, nine hundred square feet.
The footprint, yes.
That's, it's a modest house.
Yeah, by close to two thousand square feet. Relatively modest, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's
Everyone's modest is a little different.
Yeah, no, I, I just needed some clarification because I was saying that, you know, if that was another dead-ended piece of property, that wouldn't deny that. No, I think I'm good and I'm good with waivers.
Great, thank you.
So I'm just gonna continue what Steve had, Greg. So those two lots, are they those parcels? Are those buildable lots? Or you would need a subdivision to build on those lots?
I, I have a larger map that might help folks. Zooms out a little bit with, I think the parcels along Fishtown and Route One. I think that might be what they're talking about.
It is. Do you, so orange is our parcel. Eighty-six Sharon is lot thirty-seven that went all the way through.
Right.
Basically, landlocking this piece. Then the balance of those, it's not two lots, it's actually just this lot.
So that, that B thing in the middle doesn't really exist anymore because you're saying that center property extends all the way to Route One. Okay.
So I brought highlights because I thought my, my so it's easier to see on this one, but thirty-seven now goes through.
Okay.
And thirty-six was sold. So this piece is part of thirty-three to thirty-four were never developed. I'm not sure that they are even valid today.
Sure.
They're part of they're part of this corner parcel.
So could that middle lot, that's my guess, my question now, could that be developed into another re-subdivision over here? Yes.
I don't believe so because I don't think it twelve thousand square foot required.
Yeah, I don't know the size of that lot.
Yeah, I don't think, just what to say.
But, but if indeed it were more than twenty-four, twenty, right, twenty-four thousand square feet.
Yeah, be good.
Sure, you could re-subdivide.
And then how far is the stone wall from Route One? How many feet, Greg? I couldn't, I couldn't.
So it's basically the property line for the most part.
Yeah.
From the edge of pavement. It's about six feet. Maybe. Yeah, it looks like about six to seven feet and then it, the, I guess it would be the or arrow, the western end, it pulls away a bit further than that.
Yeah. So I'm not opposed to the easement at all, but the easement then, if it was in the future, it would therefore be underneath that stone wall. We'd have to relocate that stone wall, correct?
We actually gave you the easement from the right-of-way line into a property. So I think we gave eight feet so we could, without disturbing the stone wall, place, I placed a sidewalk behind it.
Inside.
And I think there's one spot on New London Road, maybe past all this, that it actually does that.
Yeah.
Well, goes up and around.
Goes up and around.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'm okay with that. That's good. Some only question then, because I take that road a lot. Is there anything, I want to promote commerce, but is there any issue on the construction trucks parking on New London Road? Is that part of the plan at all as we go to construct that house?
Oh.
No, I mean, there's, it's not physically possible.
Okay.
The edge of pavement, there's a slope and then the wall, I mean, there's unless you're blocking half the lane and then, yeah, I'm sure there would be numerous complaints and DOT would be called and
Yes, okay.
If there would be, yeah, it's not, it's not a safe situation to park on New London Road in that section.
Got it. Okay, just wanted to see what your perspective was.
I know DOT is
Yeah.
very cognizant of parking because I think they put up a bunch of signs at the corner.
Yeah.
Trying to keep people off of that section of the state road.
Okay, so, so I have no other issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks everybody. I don't have any other issues either, so. At this point, if there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment for or against, if you could come to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Katrina Gottlieb, and thank you very much for your work on this committee. My family and I live at one hundred Sharon Road, the property directly behind the proposed new subdivision. We've lived at this address for twenty years. The property has been undeveloped since the neighborhood was planned in nineteen fifty-nine. It was always our understanding that the parcels behind us would remain undeveloped land. There, to our knowledge, there was never a plan to combine them and develop with access to Route One. So I was shocked when I received a letter last week indicating the original developer's daughter now sixty-five years later wants to change the subdivision plans and develop the land. I've also been speaking with some of my neighbors who are behind some of the other parcels farther down Sharon Road. I've learned that Ms. Tompkins has also tried to do this behind their properties, but was unable to do so, so this is kind of the last effort. I have the following concern, four concerns in no particular order. Concern one, which we've already addressed tonight, is safety of the driveway onto Route One, but I will leave that, it seems to me very, a very dangerous curve, but obviously the DOT already approved it. My biggest concern is that undeveloped land is a rarity, and I would advocate to keep the land undeveloped. This section of land is a wildlife crossing. My family has a wildlife camera in the woods that shows nightly, nightly crossings of bobcat, deer, coyotes, and more. They cross from Pequot Woods to behind, through that property to connect with the stream on the other side of Sharon Road, and also, I believe, to connect up with Merritt Farm. This combines with those other undeveloped properties further down Sharon Road. So even though this is a tiny amount of property, it's all woods, the whole road. I would suggest that donating all of her various parcels all over Sharon Road to Gosa could ease her top, Ms. Topkin of her financial concerns in now owning her father's property. Concern number three, the stone walls noted on the end rendering, I think we've talked plenty about the ones on front, the one that's in the middle right here. I don't know this for sure, but one of our neighbors who has lived in the neighborhood the longest has told me that that's not just a wall, but rather the side of a barn with, and so he asked me to ask about whether there would be an architectural study prior to the development. Number four, Ms. Topkin has never spoken to my family about her plans to develop the property directly behind me. I learned of them in the letter I received this week. I didn't even know that this was something being talked about for a year. We've been, my family has been responsible for managing the spread of plant growth and fallen trees from the property in question into our property for the past twenty years. I know it's not anything legal, but just as an ethical thing, it would have been nice for us to have been given first opportunity to purchase the property in question. And then I can speak with you later just about what the elevation of the house will be. Again, not a legal thing, but just it will be my sightline now will be a new house. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Just come on up, miss your name and address.
My name is Robin Sulzby, seventy-four Sharon Road, Ms. Dick. I just have a couple comments, really. First of all, I did talk to Deb the other day, went into the office, Ms. Jones. I still am unclear in regards to, you know, years ago, the subdivision, the re-subdivision. How did that piece become so invisible is really my question, and maybe it can't be answered. You know, I mean, we, you know, we just didn't have the knowledge back then. I'm just curious, like, it was like that, what that property was forgotten. As was noted tonight, I didn't realize a year ago that this was brought up. So, and to be honest with you, I never thought about the property back there. Greg, can you show me on this map the is it, maybe, maybe the other map, maybe the, the first one where I can see the the original subdivision line on lots? Oh, okay. Okay, so this is thirty-seven, okay? So my property is here and I own, you know, like half of it, and as far as I know, there's wetlands back here, a lot of wetlands. The property near me in back of her or their property, there's also wetlands all going all the way to Fish Town Road and everything. So, you know, my concern is it just, it just concerns me that every, you know, nobody considered this area for so many years. But two years ago, this Topkin and we had gotten notification that she wanted to maybe sell the property and have this area developed. But I don't really know how that was left. I still don't know what the final decision was on that area. But I did talk to Ms. Tomkin, Topkin, a couple of years ago because my fence line in back of my fence line, I do own, we actually did a new survey a couple of years ago because we were concerned like how much do we own and we had a lower, a couple very large trees and, and one of the trees on her property was getting ready to fall on my house. So I contacted her and asked her if she would pay for that at least, and she wasn't interested in helping, and I even asked if she would, you know, pay a portion. And she was not a good neighbor. She was not interested in helping, whatever. And I even asked about, you know, maybe purchasing that, that lot, I mean, the back of my property and, you know, she just kept saying that she wanted to have all of that sold, and I understand, you know, she's had the property. I don't really know if it's in is she still the owner or is she just a successor executor? Like, does any, can anybody tell me who the owner is of that property?
Yeah, it was in the legal ad. I mean, the owners are both deceased and she's the executor.
So she is the executor. So in other words, it hasn't been sold yet.
Not, we know. Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So, as you had mentioned about those extra lots, I would, I mean, I personally would like to purchase that strip there. Just because it's just, you know, again, it's in limbo, so they're gonna take this out of limbo and build a, a small house, which is, I mean, it's fine, you know, there's really no problem there in my mind, but I would like, you know, again, these two strips are gonna be, not this two, but mine and the one on the other side. Those are in limbo and I just wanna, I'm just making a comment, like, it really would be nice to to have a final decision on, you know, maybe, like, I would, I would love to purchase that and keep it as open space because we do get a lot of animals through there. And I'm just making a couple of comments, that's all.
That's a big surprise.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else like to make a comment?
Good evening. The town must be saving on their air conditioning bill tonight here, so. Hi, my name is John Sulzby. I live at seventy-four Sharon Road. I'm gonna piggyback on the comment that Robin made. I moved to Groton twenty-five years ago. I came here, spent eleven years as the town's Parks and Recreation Director. And when I retired fourteen years ago, I stayed here because it was a very neighborly community. We have good neighbors on both sides of us. As Robin mentioned to you, the owner, more than once, has really not demonstrated a good neighborly attitude. So I have the same question that Kate did. Why did the owner not ask Kate and the other owner behind that property to sell it to us? I mean, you look at the property, it is an ugly location for anybody, and as much as you say it isn't, it's safe going onto Route One. It's gonna be a tight fit anyway you're doing. Someone who drives out of Sharon Road every day, it's a hazard just driving out of there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Frances Baldwin, and I live across the street between them. So I'm directly across and I can see that property between her house and, and the other. I only want to comment to affirm that it is a wildlife quarter. So it is a wildlife quarter. I've lived there for eighteen years, so from the Merritt property from Groton Open Space, which you all know connects well over to Haley Farm. We see turkeys, deer, bobcat, at all varieties of coyotes, so forth, come through. They, these are contiguous parcels, and I'm quite sure this is gonna interrupt that flow. So I have to confirm that, that they come across. Then they hop, they cross the street, they cross Sharon Road, and they go between my property and my neighbors. And behind my house is that creek which goes down to Beeb Woods and which goes up to the Pequot, which is all town property.
Thank you. Hey, anybody else like to make a comment for or against? Okay, if there's no one else and no other comments.
Can I just address one thing that came up just as a question? There was a comment about the vacant land on the corner of New London Road and Fishtown Road and, and whether or not anything has been decided there. There have been no applications at all for those properties. Year and a half ago, someone started to do a bit of clearing. We stopped him, has not been back, and we have zero applications for that.
But can I just clarify, if they meet the requirement, that potential application?
Oh, oh, absolutely. Sure, sure.
So which property could be developed?
So
Of what's left?
No, sorry, sorry.
I know, there's some of our halves and some of our
Yeah.
And so this is undeveloped here.
Yeah.
We have no applications for that whatsoever.
But that's owned by the same Bel Air. And that could be a few house lots, right?
There's, there's a number of things that are allowed by something there.
Right, that's true.
I don't know if I'm allowed to comment, yeah, but
No, I'm sorry, you would have to come up, you can comment briefly, but please state your name and address.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, no.
So please excuse me if it comes across that way, but just for clarification, if this helps. So this is my house right here, and the new house is gonna go here. This is the double lot. All of these are the other no man's land. Ms. Topkins did ask this owner to sell.
Careful, that's a touchscreen.
She did ask him to sell her, sell her the back of his land, so her
Escape, I guess.
What we as neighbors assume is that she
What we as neighbors assume is that she had hoped originally to do a whole sub-development back there. He refused to sell that portion of the back of his, so it will forever be landlocked because he owns it. So this is kind of, quote, all she can do, although she had these original plans to do much more. That's hearsay from all the neighbors trying to communicate with one another since we have never heard anything of her.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a phone number that needs to be exchanged between? Yeah, that's, a lot of these things are things.
I guess one other question, where exactly do the wildlife go through? Cause I'm very familiar with the.
Ah, yeah.
But if you don't mind saying your name and and address again.
Yeah, I do a lot of walking, so I I know these things. Um, and I'm a G O S A Groton Open Space member. Um, so from the merit property and Eccleston Brook, which is.
Sorry, is it, is it one of these appearing this?
It's across Fish Town.
Oh, okay.
Across, from across Fish Town, they'll cross the road and they'll come up this way. So they come from the corner of of Fish Town across Eccleston Brook, that area. So that she had mentioned there's, uh, undeveloped, uh, lots that are on the corner. Of New London Road, Fish Town, going up in this direction, um, and those would be those areas.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments or anything at this point? Then I'll entertain a motion to close the phone again.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Okay.
We haven't said anything that these people have been to hear, so maybe. We haven't had a lot of commentary on this yet.
Oh, oh, well, this is your opportunity, why don't you say something else before we?
Right, although, right, this is the public hearing on it, not really for discussion purposes, okay, okay, very good.
So, okay, so I'll just back, back, just to make sure. Is that with respect to the wildlife, and that's why I want. The wildlife path. I'm pretty, also tremendously familiar with, um. With the woods going across on both sides, especially to the Pequot Woods. So with that in mind. If this one lot is taken, it doesn't really look like it will preclude a whole lot. Um, am I wrong about that? Do you think of, that if if more was taken, I would absolutely agree, but it does seem like there's. I know Pequot Woods gets deer and gets coyotes and gets things and they come from the other side. And I don't think they're all coming through there, they're more or coming through the Judson neighborhood and whatnot. Is there any real evidence that this would be a big deal? I just wanna be able to address.
Yeah, Katrina Gottlieb, one hundred Sharon Road, my evidence is about two thousand photos on my wildlife camera. That is in the exact plot that's being developed. So that's the woods right behind my parcel, I've had a wildlife camera up there for like five years. And it's every single night those animals.
So if they, but if that particular. Plot was taken, would they have no other way to do that? Because it seems like they just move over a little bit to the west. And or continue to go over on the east side, it doesn't look like it would bottle them up, it would just be. One, it would be one more thing, I agree with that. But it doesn't look like it would be catastrophic, if the entire area was developed, I would completely agree. But do you have any indication that there's nowhere else to go if that house?
I mean, I I'm not a wildlife biologist, but.
I'm sorry, could you speak in the? We have to get you recorded.
I I would say precedent, if you subdivide these two lots into one, then what's to prevent the next set of lots being into one? Um, I'd say, I, if if the wildlife is coming from Pequot Woods, then that means. I, they'd have to go far, they would have to walk farther on either the other side of the street. Behind mine is, my house is the first place that's wood, so they would have to either go through the house across Route One. To then get over, or or they'd have to be on Route One, but again, I I'm not. I'm not a a a wildlife biologist, just saying my observation.
That's what's one thing I want to present that. That a- across from, so while we're still in the in the hearing, is that what I'm seeing is that Pequot Woods. Right across the street is Bill Al Park, there's Jumper's Academy and there's a cemetery there.
Right.
And there's quite a bit of green for them to move across the road and they do. So maybe there is a channel right there now, but I'm I'm not seeing that this is a particular funnel part, even though maybe it's favored. So is my house, but it's not. I don't think it's really stops anything.
Can I add just one thing to this, sorry? Um, I just wanna note that neither the subdivision regulations nor state statute allow you to take in. Wildlife corridors as part of your decision, while you might be sympathetic to it, it's it's not a consideration for decision when. When looking at a subdivision application.
And I kind of realized that, I wanna make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Good information.
Okay, so any other questions or they're probably ready to? Close, okay, I'll take a motion.
I think you have one.
Oh, you did, okay, and do we get a second? Any other comments? Okay, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose or abstain? Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Now, what other consideration in public hearings? And the first one is the Crystal Lake Apartments, the little Crystal Lake Road. And, um. Don't have to go in any particular order, if there are any other comments.
I have no further comments. No.
Okay.
Does anybody need a motion?
Yeah, we need the motion.
Anybody want an extra one? I did modify the end of it slightly, just to broaden it out, um, beyond.
Thank you.
Simply the performance standards for the N M D D.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but take it or leave it.
Surprise, what time did you do that? What, what, when did you modify this?
Just, just now, reading through it, yeah, it just broadened it to the whole section. The Nautilus Memorial Design District. Um, it's just the end portion there.
Six point five. Overlay, do you wanna read from this?
Does, does that make sense?
I don't know.
Take out performance standards.
Just take a second to to re-explain it, so in my original motion, one of the findings was that. It met the performance standards of the Nautilus Memorial Design District, I just broadened it out to meeting the entire section. Of the Nautilus Memorial Design District, um, because it obviously does, um, beyond just the performance standards.
Okay, good.
Small one.
Minor.
What are you reading or you reading?
You want to?
I'll read it if you.
I'd be fast. Two pager, two pager, too.
You want to take, your turn. Make the motion. I would make a motion to approve S P E C twenty-five dash zero 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 one, Crystal Lake Apartments, zero, Crystal Lake Road. And to construct two three-story multi-unit residential buildings with associated roadway, parking utilities. And site amenities, amenities in the Nautilus Memorial Design District, subject to the following conditions, one. Grading activities including excavation grading, blasting, processing, stockpiling and removal of earth products. Shall be for the purpose of rendering the property suitable for multi-unit housing development. No additional excavation, blasting or processing. Shall be conducted outside of what is necessary to render the site suitable for the use of permitted. Two, grading activities shall only occur between the hours of eight A M and five P M on weekdays. There should be no grading activities during weekends, state and federal holidays. Three, stockpile, side slopes and any other slope cuts shall be temporarily stabilized. If not actively being worked in accordance with the Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control. Four, rock crushing and processing shall only occur in the location as shown on the approved site plan. Five, excess earth materials that are not intended to be repurposed onsite shall be transported only to town-approved locations. Under no circumstances shall earth materials be sold onsite. Six, an environmental bond to ensure site stabilization and maintenance of erosion controls during a construction. Shall be required prior to the initiation of any site work. Findings, the commission finds that multi-unit dwellings are in allowed use. And that the application meets the requirements of section five point one dash eight dot G of the zoning regulations. The commission also finds this application complies with the special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six. Of the zoning regulation in that it does not alter the essential characteristics of the area. Does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts and does not conflict with the purpose of these regulations. The commission finds that the proposed development complies with section six point five, Nautilus Memorial Design District overlay. Is there a second?
Second?
Second, great, um, any other discussion? All of us in favor to say aye?
Aye.
You oppose or abstain, okay.
Would like to make a motion to approve the coastal site plan. For the construction of two three-story unit residential buildings with associated roadway. Parking utilities and site amenities because it is consistent with all applicable goals. And coastal policies of C G S twenty-two A dash ninety-two incorporates all reasonable measures. To mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All of them abstain? Okay, unanimous. All right, great.
Another one for the site.
So now consideration. Ready for consideration of the re-subdivision of Bella Estates? Any other comments or anything?
I've none others, um. The sightlines seem to be taken care of, one, one out of our hands, they seem to be done, but even our own experience is that, it's that, that, actually, it's kind of a peak of a hill. So it's got better views either direction, so it's, uh. Seems to be permitted, permissible and won't really do much harm. So I can see no reason, I'm okay with waivers and I'm okay with, uh. Especially with the sidewalk. Even though in the future, I'd like to see on the other side, but for now, allowance for this side works fine for me.
Thank you. Michael.
Um, I don't have any concerns, the only thing I would suggest is that. I mean, I know in places where there are wildlife corridors, sometimes the people, the state or whoever. Uh, puts up a sign that we have one in our neighborhood, it's for deer crossing, but it might be something, but. Somebody would have to be in touch with the, uh, Connecticut Department of Transportation, I would imagine, to get that done, that isn't something that we do. That's all.
Right, thank you. Steve? You got nothing? Okay, Kevin?
Nothing.
Then I'll, uh, make the motion here. For sub twenty-five dash zero 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 one, re-subdivision of Bella Estates, section B dash one. So I move to approve a waiver of section four point seven one, sidewalks incurred. The way the requirement of a sidewalk along the New London Road frontage. Um, the commission finds, one, the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare. Two, there are no existing sidewalks along New London Road in the vicinity of the proposed lot. And the applicant will provide easement for future sidewalk construction. Three, the waiver conforms to the criteria specified in section one point one O of the subdivision regulation.
Second?
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all's in favor, yeah? You oppose or abstain? Okay, none unanimous? Okay, and then second motion to approve a waiver of section five point four. Issuance of permits to waive the requirement to complete all public improvements prior to the issuance of a building permit. The commission finds, one, the public improvements will be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, the granting of a waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare. And three, the waiver conforms to the criteria specified in section one dot one O of subdivision regulations. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any comments, questions, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose or abstain? Unanimous again. And then lastly, uh, move to approve the re-subdivision of Bella Estates. Five nine one, New London Road, with the following modifications. One, in accordance with section four dot nine five, a payment in Louisville Open Space of three thousand dollars. The equivalent of ten percent of fair market value of the land. Prior to the approval of the subdivision shall be made prior to recording the plan in land records. Two, the final approved easement to allow future construction of a public sidewalk shall be recorded in land records. At the same time as the subdivision is recorded. And three, all technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. There a second?
Second.
Okay. More discussion? Okay, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay, none of you unanimous, so, thank you very much. All right, next. Wow, approval of minutes, okay. Something faster than I think that was. Okay, so first off. Make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, there any, uh, edits or changes to these? Corrections, all the above?
Yes, no.
Okay, all of the favor say aye? Any opposed or abstain? Nope, okay, unanimous again. Okay, the next one, Monday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So I make a motion to approve those minutes, uh, special meeting minutes of planning of zoning commission. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any corrections? Very good. Okay, then, uh, all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous again. And then, um, which one, I'm on July eighth, right? Okay, make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any corrections? Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second, yes, any corrections?
One.
All righty.
Three of us there, all that.
Oh, I, perfect, okay, so all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
You oppose, oh, okay, unanimous again. All righty. So. At this point, are there any more communications for the public? Online? And then we have the Fitzgerald correspondence, okay? Now, let's see, yeah, how would you like to handle the Fitzgerald correspondence? So I know I, I personally, I read it and I actually went and walked there today. It was quite interesting, I didn't, I took pictures of everything too, all the signs.
So.
But I'm curious as to what you find is missing at this point.
So, so we don't find any missing. Um, and as a matter of fact, we have developed a program to actually inspect once a year. With our G I S coordinator and to locate them. And in two or three weeks, we will have the next inspection of all the signs, anything that, you know, is missing will be replaced. I, Mr. Fitzgerald has, was a resident and a commission member for a really, really long time. And I think he remembers signs in places where we don't have a record of it. I'm not disputing, they they might have been there, I I don't know, we just don't have a record of it and we may not have permission to put them back where he remembers them.
Right. I think, um. When walking the whole thing today, really from the bridge, um, down to Fort Rachel. Um, it seemed to me that, and some, you know, the water comes in, some places not necessarily clear. Where the public access is necessarily where my head, but it wasn't impossible either, it was pretty logical. But I also, there were two people out, uh, well, four people actually sitting and enjoying. But I also, there were two people out, uh, well, four people actually sitting enjoying themselves. So I did a mini survey to see what they thought of the access and everything. And, um, one couple said, just perfect. The other one was giving high marks too. So it seemed, especially along, I guess what's really nice is that beautiful garden before you get to. Museum of Art there and then the passage along there, nice benches and everything, but it's also nice going on.
So one other thing I want to note is that we do have a plan to upgrade the signage. The signage that's out there right now is essentially. DEEP signage from nineteen ninety-one. We had a grant and that's what it was. So we have a design that was done by Kent Frost to, um, upgrade the signage and probably put in, um. You know, uh, like a kiosk, so someone can stand on West Mystic and, or, or West Main Street rather, and see where they can, they can travel. So, yeah.
Hundred years ago, I think you had passed down to the commission, it was, uh, a map, a full map of.
Absolutely.
Is that still available?
It is. Yes, it is.
Well, this is a mail.
Yep, that was, that's from nineteen ninety-one.
I was thinking it's almost if you had a little trail, but I'm not sure.
Exactly. No, that's, that is something, we've met with some of the property owners and the folks who have given the town easements over the years. About the plan. We got some feedback on the design of the signs and we probably will be modifying it somewhat, um. But definitely going to stick with a kiosk and, and some other method of connecting all of those points because. They aren't contiguous.
Right.
So, yeah.
So it's a beautiful walk.
It is.
It is.
It is.
It's a treasure that maybe not enough visitors know about.
That's what, we just had the busiest weekend in Mystic we get during the year. And there were scant few people walking that because they don't know where it goes or how it, where it would, if they start where it's going to end up. So I'm not sure, I don't remember the signage, but maybe some of it, you say kiosk and you'll see a map. Most humans are terrible with maps, especially now. And so maybe the idea is that it says arrows to saying where this will take you. This is the way to get to a place, but then where it crosses into the parking lot or whatnot, then we need some extra help.
Exactly.
Yeah, good. Well, that's very positive developments. Super. Okie dokie, so. I guess, uh, any special permits? Subdivisions, site plans, there we go. So we have site plan twenty-five zero 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 seven, Crystal Lake Apartments.
And this is not a public hearing, so if you have questions of the applicant, have at it.
It's the cam, though, right?
No, it's the site plan.
Oh, oh, oh.
Site plan and the cam.
Yeah.
Oh.
So we'll see if I have any questions left.
I have a favorite copy of the.
I do. So I just don't know the timing, though. If, if you had perfect timing, when, when is all this going to take place? The beginning of the project, how long is it going to take?
So, um. Ideally, it's going to start, uh, later in spring of next year and, and move through that construction season. So the site work, I mean, for, um, it's been probably eight, eight months to a year site work, um, and then the vertical construction.
Okay.
Would be a yearly.
So completion in twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Yeah. Pretty normal. Twenty twenty-seven, so it's two years from when you get approval, year and a half to two years.
Yeah.
Is all the financing in place?
Um, yeah.
So that'd be true.
That overlaps with the other project we approved on, right on Route twelve, right?
It does.
Yeah, it does. That's why the traffic should be.
That there were.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're well underway, yeah.
I just want to reiterate that the traffic study did take into account the one thousand to Route twelve, though. Just.
Yeah.
Don't reiterate that. Yeah, yeah.
That filled a lot of gaps, the recent one, right?
Yeah, it really do.
Okay.
Okay, so is everybody ready? Would anybody like to read the motion? I don't want to leave anybody out.
I'll, I'll read the hard copy motion.
Right, I could. Oh, human change.
If you want to. Um, SIT twenty-five dash triple oh seven, Crystal Lake Apartments, zero Crystal Lake Road, draft motion to approve site plan. SIT twenty-five dash zero zero seven, Crystal Lake Apartments, zero Crystal Lake Road, the following modifications. Number one, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state or local agency shall require additional review by town staff or the commission. Whichever is appropriate. Two, the design engineer shall certify that the stormwater management system has been installed per the plan. Prior to the issuance of the certificate of site plan compliance. Three, a geotechnical report shall be provided to the Office of Planning and Development prior to the issuance of a building permit. Four, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Motion to approve the coastal site plan.
Wait, wait, both on the first.
Both on the first.
Yeah, so I second that. And, um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Another one unanimous? Do I read the coastal site?
Uh, to approve the coastal site plan, the motion is to approve the coastal site plan for the construction of two three-story multi-unit residential buildings. With associated roadway, parking, utilities and site amenities because it is consistent with all applicable goals and coastal policies. The CGS twenty-two A dash ninety-two incorporates all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources. Second.
Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
You know, that's, okay, thank you. Great. Thanks a lot.
We'll have the AC fixed next time. Is it, is it broken?
No.
It's running.
We live with.
Horrifying.
I make a motion that we get a better AC. It's bizarre.
I think we're gonna meet at the Marriott or something.
The office space, there are some offices that are freezing and people have the windows open to let in the warm air. There are.
Balance of everything else.
Ones where it's so humid and thick. It's, it's just.
This is a, uh, seems like a mechanical problem that should be easy to fix.
It's a balancing problem. You have enough.
If you guys have any tropical plants that need to grow really well, my office is a perfect place.
Yeah, yeah, my office is thick too.
I mean.
There are some folks who have portable air conditioners in their office.
Yeah.
And blowing out, blowing out the window.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's a little.
Yeah.
Yep. Anyway.
Well, okay, any old business? Any new business? Yes, Mouse Island.
Okay, so. In your packet, um, there is a letter from all three, um, Mouse Islanders, um, as well as some suggested, um, text. To allow short-term rentals on the island. Um, as you may recall back in June. When you adopted the new map as well as the regulations, um. You, you decided not to allow short-term rentals on the island. At that time, um, it was proposed just to allow them. Right? And, and your thoughts were really there should be some conditions. Um, so, so the, the folks on Mouse Island got together. And, and suggested some conditions and I do see two of them online, so I'm going to allow them to talk.
Sure.
Um, because this is a preliminary discussion, right? Um, so I'm going to allow Beth Morris to talk and then Joe Gentili. Alright. Okay, so you guys can both chime in whenever you like. Um, but I'll just briefly go over what all. Um, what all you propose. And really, it is just in the table of permitted uses, um. To, instead of having an X, have a C for conditions, so which will direct you to the conditions of short-term rentals. And they are suggesting the modification, um, deal with off, off-island parking. And that all of the others would be the same for everybody else. Um, so that, that someone on the island, if they want to, um, do a short-term rental, they need to. You know, get approval and provide evidence that they actually have parking spaces on the mainland, um, for their guests.
Well, I, I guess my only concern with this and reading through this whole thing. We kind of don't know what's going to happen there or how it's going to look or how it's going to fit that. I don't, at least I'm not comfortable. You only have three houses. I know Mouse Island, I'm very, very well. I don't know how many times I've been by it, but I've been by it a lot, uh, in the water. But, um, but I was, my only thought would be is, and I'm really open, it's just throwing out an idea. As if we made it at least conditional approval.
That, right, that's what this would be. This would be a conditional approval.
I might special permit with a special term, wouldn't you? I wanted to get your thoughts on that. I know we didn't have time to talk about.
So, um.
I know it's only three people.
I, I, that's, that's just what it is. And so those would be the folks who would be notified because there's nothing else, no one else within a hundred and fifty feet. Um, I, uh, my understanding is they communicate very well because of the tight community. But Beth or Joe, if, if you want to chime in here on thoughts about, about the conditions for, um, allowing short-term rentals?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think a, at the previous meeting, this is Beth Morris, at the previous meeting, I think there were some concerns around parking. There were some concerns around boating licenses, um, and a few other things. I, I don't think there's a lot of conditions that we have to be concerned about. I think we can easily approve parking. We all have guest parking as well as our own parking at Spicer's Marina right now. That could change in the future. Um, other than that, I don't think there's any other conditions other than what we stipulated in the recommended wording. Which I thought was pretty straightforward, Deb. So, you know, we're just hoping, again, our biggest concern is even if we ourselves do not want to. Airbnb the property, if we do want to resell the property, that is, um, you know, a possible perk. Of someone who may want to invest or buy the properties. And so that I think is what we're most concerned about, that we have that right. Um, and the conditions I think are pretty clear, Deb. I don't know if I need to elaborate anymore on that.
Right, one, one thing that the chair is suggesting here is instead of having it be a, a site plan, um. You know, where you demonstrate that you meet all of these conditions, that it be a special permit, which is a mandatory public hearing. Um, where you have to notify, um, basically properties within a hundred and fifty feet of yours, which is, you know, obviously just the other folks on Mouse Island. Um, it's a, an extra step in the process and that's, that's what she's suggesting right now.
Yeah, and I, I would like to defer to, uh, to Joe on that just because I don't want to be the sole person speaking to it, but I, I don't. We all communicate well. Like you said, I don't see this as a problem, but, um. Again, I would assume we'd only have to do this one. Let's say you were going to Airbnb it for the entire summer. It would be one special permit, correct?
Um, that, that's right. And it would, it would last, I mean, it, it would go with the property at that point. So even if you sold it. Um, or if you wanted to do it this year, but then not again for another five years. It, once approved, it's approved.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm personally okay with that. I don't know, Joe, if you're able to just.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Are you saying that in order to do this, we have to approach the commission? In the form of a special permit to be allowed to do this?
So, so what you've suggested, the, the document that, that you guys gave to me that was in their packet, no, does not, does not require that. It does require an approval, but it doesn't require a special permit. But, you know, there are some zones in town. Um, where special permits are required because the commission determined that it's a really, you know, it's a dense area and, and. Adjacent property owners really need to be given notice of it. So that's, that's the discussion, which way, which way to go.
Right. And I was just thinking, what if somebody comes in with a, you know, like hideous design for their accessory going, you know. There's something else. I know everybody, you know each other, you're probably very good friends right now, but these things can always change and stuff like that. It would just be a protection. And it's, I think, since you really don't have to do it again and again, it hopefully wouldn't be to owners. But I just think.
Well.
I don't know, it's a small thing, that's just my.
The ADU aspect of this is not.
No, that's not part of this discussion.
Right.
Right, ADUs are allowed by administrative site plan.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah.
You know, that's like it's.
Yeah, you guys don't see those. But if someone, you know, built an ADU and then wanted to do short-term rentals with it, okay, then we'd start talking. About this. Yeah.
That's all. Just a, a little protection against, um, maybe things not being as nice as they are now.
I don't. I don't know if it's protection against things being nice and frank. These, these are the three owners and we, we're trying to accommodate what these three people want to do with their properties. And it doesn't affect anybody else. The only thing would be is if one of them sells it to somebody else at some point. Then there needs to be a little bit of protection that we can offer the other two because that kind of goes out. You get one person who's completely disagreeable and now this camaraderie kind of goes away. So that's where the special. Permit might kick in just because it requires the hearing. And it's still only the three. It means you have to talk.
But I mean.
They have to talk to each other.
What could we possibly say?
No, yeah, exactly. And, and what if all three existing owners do the special permit and get the approvals? It goes with, it goes with the property. So then you get an ugly neighbor and it's like, too bad, you've already got it.
That's kind of true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I honestly, I, I don't know how much it matters, the, uh.
I think it's, you know, it's another.
One of them did.
Hurt all and cost.
Well, one was sold fairly recently. I know I thought, gee, what a wonderful idea, buy a house out there, but it was, um. It's just, it is totally up to the commission. I just throw that out.
Yeah. I don't see, I mean, compared to what we get from a special permit, something in downtown Mystic versus. When there's only three people involved.
Right, yeah.
I think it's way, way different. I mean, it's parking, it's noise, it's nuisance, it's garbage, it's, you know, these guys are.
Very simple.
Three of them.
Very simple.
Yeah.
Throw that out.
I, I think, I mean, part of. My rationale the last time is that we were told that this wasn't something that anybody was interested in. So I'm assuming that no one is still interested in it. But I, you know, the other thing is that there was some mention at the last. When we were doing this, like fire protection and public and safety and those kinds of things and how you. Ensure those kinds of things for somebody who's coming in for a weekend. I don't know. That was my, that was the concern that was really.
I think so, right?
I, it seems like they are, like, they could be interested in it now, but I don't think that that was something that, uh, I mean, it doesn't make any difference. You know, what, what you're told. And I'm not, you know, it's just that because people can change their minds, right? It's allowed or it's not allowed.
Right, I think, I, I think we just want to have the option.
Option, yes.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I get.
I think that's it. I mean, the special permit, I, I, I could go either way. I would actually defer to you all, but. I, I just want to be able, if I want to sell this property, that I can say, oh, there is a possibility that you could do short-term rentals. Whatever that process is, just having that a, a possibility brings up the value of the property in my opinion. Um, and, you know, as far as insurance, I mean, uh, we all probably carry our own insurance. I can say that, you know, I carry. An umbrella policy, so, you know, if anyone's hurt or whatever, I'm assuming that would apply if I was going to make this an investment property. Then you would, you know, you insure yourself appropriately. Um, again, I think I was probably the one, and I think Jim might have said, we're not interested in that now. Um, based on how the houses are set up, but it doesn't mean that we might not be interested in the future or in a future, you know, possible buyer.
Yeah, no, I think, I believe that that is consistent with what I understand as well. So I'm fine with that, what you're, and I understand that. Um, so I had a question too. So my question was, I'm, I'm just reading the June sixteenth letter. Says during the public hearing, some of the committee members seemed to be unaware of even where Mouse Island was located, not understood how they're off grid. Which committee members were you guys referring to?
I don't know everybody's name, but they were sitting in the middle and it's really hard to see on your eyes.
I don't think they need to tell us.
I know, but why would you put that in a letter?
I, I wouldn't recommend it either, but still, I don't think they have to disclose who they think it was.
Yeah, no, I just, I found that we had had multiple meetings beforehand, and I'm just speaking for myself. Where we had discussed a lot of the things that were discussed, was my understanding that coming into that meeting before, you know, anything was voted on, the people. At least understood where we were. Some people didn't know we were off-grid. Some people thought we might have electricity. So I just, I felt like. Me personally, I felt like the committee wasn't well-prepared in some cases. And it seemed to be some inconsistency across the members going out of the public hearing. So we were actually just surprised to find out the next day when we reviewed the actual meeting online. That things had changed because I think we all thought coming out of the public hearing that it would at least be an option for us, even if we had a change. That things had changed, cuz I think we all thought coming out of the public hearing that it would at least be an option for us, even if we had to change wording in the future. But it was confusing for us, who had all been working with the committee, specifically Deb in the past. Why some of these questions are coming up so late when we had met of quite a few times over the last year.
Okay. So, so my only issue, is there any, I'm just asking any commission member, is there anyone who doesn't know where Mouse Island is? Or can you relate to this particular statement? Cuz I can't, I mean, right? Every single one of us knows where Mouse Island is.
Even if Jeff were here.
Pardon?
Jeff is on the committee boat for the mudheads.
Okay.
So, you know.
Yeah, and I think possibly in your follow-up meeting, you actually had plans and people seemed to understand, but during the public hearing, again, that was the part we were part of. We did not, i- it seemed like people were confused about how it was set up. People were asking about if we could put roads in at some point. Um, if they had boating licenses, if you actually went by, you could see you could actually swim across or take a rowboat across. So it just seemed like there just was a basic non-understanding of the committee members. And again, if that, that's just our interpretation, if that's not.
That's what she taught him up.
Yeah.
I think sometimes in our defense, we ask questions not to.
Yeah.
They're rhetorical, you know, um, where you are asking a question so that other commission members may consider something. Even if it's, you know, it's just, it doesn't mean that we don't know the island or where it is, I think. It's just rhetorical questions, sometimes.
Understood.
So do we need to do anything else tonight?
So. Uh, tell me, do you have a consensus here as to how you wanna do this, um, special permit or just conditional?
I'm okay with conditional, cuz there's three people, what they want is fine.
Yeah, I think everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everybody's fine.
Okay, okay. Alright, so in that case, what I'll do is I'll formalize an application.
Yep.
Um, and kinda get it in the queue and do the, you know, public hearing and all of that.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, no.
I, I'm good, thank you very much. I thank.
Great, thanks for attending, guys.
Thanks.
Hey, next.
I've never been to Mouse Island.
It's just something odd that.
I have, and it was beautiful.
I don't get that.
No, I agree too.
Right.
It's okay.
It's okay to not have gone somewhere.
Yeah, new applications.
Um, so we have two on the agenda, um, just for your notification. One is a renewal of special permit three twenty-one, which is. Better known as the Whittles, X, okay? Um, and then special permit one eighty-three, it's a request for extension when that one was granted some probably twenty years ago. Um, the, one of the conditions of the special permit is you could just ask for a, an extension. So anyway, please ask for an extension. Okay.
Right.
It's a pond excavation that he's almost done with.
Something I know.
Yeah, okay.
If we have, uh, next one is uh, renewal of special permit three twenty-one.
Right.
Four-one Gold Store Island.
Uh, right, so those are the two new applications. Um, that, that we just kind of went over, the one on Gold Star is Whittles, sorry, yeah, that's, yeah. And then the other one is um, the Giordano excavation.
Yes.
Yep, and no referrals.
Okay, great. Um, now, commission reports, um. I did go to an educational uh, session, uh, two hours, um, in person, that was excellent. And Hal, watch out, it's about how to read a site.
Saw that, right?
Topography.
Yes, okay, I did, I said, I know I was writing that to something. Just kidding, but I know it was really, it was well worth it, I highly recommend. And I can use a ruler to like, great, you gotta pay this. And it wasn't easy, we, okay, it's a trick question, it's probably bigger than that, so.
No, you can use a scale.
So, and, um, I know, maybe I scrambled. I changed the uh, order of things tonight, just to see if you liked it or not, happy, I'll wait, wait till the end. Cuz my thought was, maybe it's good to let them hear what we say first, um.
Well, the only thing I would suggest is that, some, I, I know myself, I sort of like. Made my decision more clear. And so then, perhaps the per, uh, the public's perception of now they have to change my mind as opposed to.
Oh, okay.
I think that I, I would have been more comfortable if everybody speaks and then you speak, just because then people don't feel.
It's all data, you know, it's all.
Take in all the information.
Right, as if they do provide additional or analytic in- information that we may possibly use.
First and before.
Well, that's why I made the comment about the sign, because I think that, you know, that's a valid concern, but it isn't something that we can. Fact.
Correct. Right.
Okay, there's several Connecticut legal sites were suggesting that the way we did tonight was the right way to do it.
Oh.
And that, and for me, I just thought, well, it's a difficult way, and let's just try it, and see what you'll write things, and then go back the way we did at this point. It's no big deal.
They give reason?
No, it's no big deal.
Why they think that that's a better way?
Never get.
Means, I mean, the thing is, is that it does give us then more information to consider, right?
Yeah.
Or, or maybe the thing for us to do then is, or for me, is to hold back on saying that I'm fine with this. Until I've heard from the public.
Right.
Give me a chance then to.
That's why it could made the meeting go faster, because none of us had anything to say. We were so happy that we'd said everything.
Right.
So I don't know, but, I mean, I'll go back to the other way, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's a public hearing, and I think that to give the public the chance to speak before we've. Seem to have made up our minds, is, you know, the, the way to do it.
I think that's a very good perception, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent, good. Okay, reporter of commission, if I have any.
I have two, I got a uh, the, I don't know if anyone else got it, but I got the flood flyer from the town. And I gotta say, I was looking at it and I was thinking, boy, this is really pretty, uh, who did this? And then I, oh, you did, I think it's a great, uh, you know, it really was eye-catching and hopefully you get a turnout. For the flood.
I hope so.
What's that date again, Deb?
It, it's the twentieth, over at Thrive.
Yeah.
Um, it is, this is the community conversation, we will have, um, Diane Iskavik there, who is the state coordinator. Um, and it is not just for people who have properties in the flood zone. Because you can get, as we've seen in Vermont, you know, on the other side of the state. You can get flooded out even if you are not in a flood zone, so, um, yeah.
And the board's still out by the door, I think.
It is. But, but if you decide to go, please do um, sign up for it, because we are providing food and we really do expect this one to be well-attended. So we kinda wanna know how much we need to get.
And David also provided, I saw on Grotton Municipal Television, like a twenty-two minute discussion, which I thought was actually, if you all have a chance to listen to it.
Yep.
Is, I thought was really good, right? Have you, have you listened to that?
Yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Whatever, incisive.
And then I have one more comment that I would like to kinda, I know we've talked about it before, but I don't know when it, uh, subdivision regulation update.
Right, we actually, the town council actually approved CIP money, funding for it.
Okay.
Um, and it's not just for subdivision regulations, it will be done in concert with the road and range standards.
Okay.
Because both of those documents, you know, spell out how we build a road.
Okay.
So, yes.
So, what would we, cuz my, my thing, I think that would be, I mean, it's gonna be a big deal. But fee in lieu of for sidewalks.
Um, so fee in lieu has to be authorized by state statute. I don't know whether sidewalks are, but that is absolutely something we will look into.
But it's something that.
Right.
I mean, I know that, like, for this application here, and I think that we, like with open space. We are able to establish kind of like what the numbers on.
Yep.
And uh.
Yep.
I think it would be a beneficial thing, I mean, maybe not financially for the applicant, but they would go in knowing what has to be done. Just like we do with open space, there's not them coming before us and asking for it. Getting all this way and then finding out that you've got another.
Yep.
Ten thousand dollar bill that needs to be done.
So.
And then it could be put into a fund, just like something else, and then you use those monies to build sidewalks, where we really do need.
Right, and, and actually to follow up on that, um, Dave and I met with some representatives from the coastal section of DEEP last week. Because they are considering suggesting um, new law to allow a fee in lieu of coastal access. So in areas where it may not be appropriate, or, or difficult, or, or just whatever. Um, to allow towns, if they wanna opt into it, to get a fee to be used for improvement of coastal access or purchase of others. Anyway, they're.
Be interesting to see how they're able to, uh.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, make a number that.
And we talked about that, I, I have no idea what language it's gonna come out.
I mean, it's not like you can get an appraisal for something like.
Yeah, it might be based on the amount of, uh, you know, linear feet that they have, I, I don't.
The views, when you get to the end, right?
So, we'll see.
Okay, anybody else?
I just had to get, did anything happen with the Grotton Farm Project?
Oh.
The Grotton Farm Project.
We make it that a central.
The, on, you know, the apartments.
Oh, the cottage.
You mean down, down here at the bottom of the, yeah, we, you all approved the.
No, I, but, but I mean, did anything happen after we approved?
No.
Still, everything's a go.
Yeah, yeah, they are finalizing the plan, yeah, absolutely.
That one's. Happened to run into, uh. Next store, and he was like, oh, I heard that fell through.
Nope, that's not true.
At least not through us.
Exactly, exactly, no, it's still going on.
Okay, so report is that.
So I just, it's just really quick, I just wanna put all of this on your radar. We have a lot of meetings coming up in the next two, three months. Um, so in August, obviously, at the end of the month, on the twenty-fifth, we have steering committee meeting. Um, in September, you've got two regular meetings. We're also scheduling a work session on the P O C D with Conservation Commission and E D C. Sort of reconvening that three-commission meeting we had at the very beginning. Um, you've got another steering committee meeting at the end of that month. We are going to be meeting with Sue later this week to talk about scheduling a couple of meetings that are dedicated to housing. To housing trends and to reviewing the Kamoin Report, so that you guys all understand what is in there. And, and getting a presentation just for you all. Um, and then there's a whole bunch in October, there's missing, the Missing Middle Project is going to have some meetings coming up. Um, so yeah, you're gonna be meeting to death, I'm sorry.
And we'll get the material while in.
That is, that is totally it, yes, exactly, exactly, at least a week in advance, for sure.
Okay.
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, the Kamoin Meeting is envisioned to first go over the past reports. And then start to go through the report that they're doing for the Missing Middle Housing, which should inform the P O C D.
Exactly.
Um, we're trying to kind of align those projects as much as possible. Um, the second thing, and keep forgetting to mention it, but our uh, focus groups. Our, our not focus groups, our steering committee for the Missing Middle Housing, we'd really love to have um, a couple P Z C members. Um, I don't know if we really conceptualize fully if uh, a P Z C members. We, we split the, the steering committees for the Missing Middle Housing into a technical steering committee. Um, wherein that's gonna be more, you know, architects, town staff, developers, builders. People who can really speak to, hey, this won't work, or hey, this will work, um, and more of an advisory steering committee. So I don't know really where the P Z C, where the membership feels that, that they would be most useful. Um, but we're thinking one to two um, individuals from the P Z C. Um, beyond one or maybe more, both steering committees potentially.
We'll be, we'll be pulling you guys.
Yeah, yeah, but just putting that on your radar, um.
Yep.
Those steering committees will be meeting.
Yep.
In the fall.
Well, there you go, that's really good, if we can discuss that.
What, yeah, what do we, uh, what do we call this, uh, middle housing? Is that?
So, middle housing has different kind of contextual definitions depending on where you are, right? And we were just discussing this on one of our last meetings, because Kamoin actually asked, you guys have a hard and fast definition up to this amount of a unit. And we really don't, but really it envisions uh, filling that gap between single-family and larger apartment buildings. Probably in the context of Grotton, that is apartment buildings, fifty or more units, twenty or more, I don't even, I, you know.
Lexus class, and, you know, and, well.
Yeah.
Is it affordability or?
It's affordability through the context of, you know, what, what we talked about, like market rate affordable, right? So by virtue of being able to do a, a triplex that, that lowers the cost for a developer, then they can then offer those units presumably at a lower cost. It's not gonna be a deed restricted affordable unit, um, but it is managing those costs a little bit more. Creating more choice, which then, you know, presumably is gonna create, um, you know, more cost variation.
Was there apartments?
I never see it too much, but it's occurring to me that my Portland, Oregon days, that a big thing to do would be to buy a, to buy. A fourplex and live in a, live in one, you get the best one, which makes it all, the whole project very affordable and easy to do. Maybe that's the rainbow, you know, you could buy a sixplex, I can't buy a three. Forty apartment, I can't buy twenty, but something that has a few garages and it looks like a house.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's making those.
About wine or renting?
Any, any.
Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not there yet, I mean, really, it is just increasing options right now, a triplex would be considered. Just the same as Triton Square, it's a multifamily, so.
The thing that kind of really differs about this town and others that we've been, cuz there's very little opportunity for ownership at a lower.
Well, that's, that's something, when I see, you know, all these projects coming up, that are like apartment buildings, apartment buildings, apartment buildings.
Yeah.
It's fine to provide housing, but from a economic standpoint, I mean, no one's gonna get rezoned and, you know, rented.
Well, they can't pay that house.
Well.
zoning can only do so much.
Yeah, right.
Okay, it, it can only do so much.
And, and I, I guess in this, this ownership conversation too, you know, if we allow triplexes, quadplexes, you know. It would also increase the likelihood of probably to the, to, to your point, someone buying out the, the building. Living in one and being a local landlord, right? Cuz that's an issue that, you know, I think is. You know, we hear about throughout the region, throughout the, the, the state.
So, there's nothing that prevents.
This isn't really on the agenda.
Yeah, no, no, no. Sorry, sorry.
You guys, meetings are coming up.
There's something, and we will explain.
I asked one question in there, so. How was in favor of C M D A, right? Town Council voted on C M D A. I don't understand how C M D A fits into the P O C D though.
And, and that is something we've been reviewing with the housing, the housing chapter that you will be seeing in the next month or two. Um, Worsley Witness getting up to speed with that, we'll be able to talk about that.
Yeah, we've very typically commented on that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Got it. That's all I have.
Sorry.
Okay, let's see, we got A S P report.
Yep, any questions on any of it?
And then applications update?
Yep, again, any questions on?
Oh, that's good, and then we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, everybody's in favor.
You bet.
We're in favor of everything that I.
I'm in favor of some A C.